You know, when I moved down here, I got rid of all my ice cream.
Good.
I hope, I hear you.
Do you have ice on your windshield this morning?
Oh, man. Good morning. Just called the meeting to order. It is Friday, December eighteenth. We're here for a regular monthly meeting. We're gonna stand for a moment's time. Call them by the flag, please.
The religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Keith?
Here.
Mr. Pollak?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay. This one has our agenda. With respect to that, we're gonna move right into, uh, I think financial, or do you have anything to add, or we're gonna put that for next meeting?
If we can put it for next meeting. Debbie is actually traveling today for the Christmas week coming, so she's busy working on, uh, getting her arms around our last year's.
Okay. All right, then we'll move Sandy.
Morning, morning. Um, so from the first of January, obviously, two thousand twenty-one, Bay County EMS are gonna be taking over our transportation of patients from Mexico Beach to, um, either, obviously, Gulf, um, or, um, Bay Area. The reason for this is basically that, um, Gulf County wanted to increase their cost to Bay County EMS services, expedition for no increase in service or patient care. So what is gonna happen is that Bay County EMS is gonna put a full-time paramedic in his own rescue truck here in Mexico Beach. He's gonna take over my office upstairs. I'll stay, um, if Kathy will have me, basically, still with Kathy in City Hall. And, um, they will work alongside our EMTs, which will basically give us, you know, immediate, advanced cardiac life support in the city from now that we arrive on scene. They will be aided, obviously, by our six fully-trained, um, EMTs from upstairs. Now, this will, the mayor will then be able to do things like EKGs, which can then be sent immediately to the, to the hospital. They get feedback from the hospital if necessary, goes to the hospital and know what's coming. They're also gonna bring with them a Lucas device, which is a CPR machine, or a machine that does CPR for you whilst you can administer oxygen and other drugs if necessary. It basically means that you don't have somebody there, you know, pumping away. All of that is done by a machine. There, um, you know, it's gonna give us a significantly better patient care, you know, way, way quicker with all the drugs that the NHS system would be, um, can administer. So to me, and I think to everybody in Mexico Beach, it is an increase in patient care. Um, should there be a delay from the, sorry, the ambulance coming from, uh, Bay County, Gulf County will still be a mutual aid to us should we need them, but our primary, um, ambulances will only be coming from Bay County. So if anybody has any questions on that, real quick?
I think it's a good idea.
And they're basically gonna start, they will be here on January thirty-first, so that, because they really start, um, on, um, I think about on the first. So they're gonna basically be set up on November thirty-first. And they're actually upstairs, they've already put in some equipment that they need to put themselves. That's what all the noise is. Um, hydrants have been replaced rapidly. Kevin's not here right now, but, um, the plastics are replacing all the damaged hydrants and/or, um, servicing the ones that need to be straightened and so on and so forth. My Christmas list for the children for the presents on Christmas Day is growing, but as many of you that may or may, you know, may know any children that come to town, please let me know. Uh, for those that are here, we do a drive-around in the fire trucks, um, and we give out presents that have been donated by, uh, residents of the city to, uh, to the children. So, um, you know, please continue to, uh, to increase that list as, as much as you can, all right? And, uh, please, everybody have a safe and happy Christmas, and I hope I don't see you for any other reason other than to, um, to your children with presents.
Sandy, what, there's no change in that one? When we got our system dial nine-one-one?
It's exactly the same. Our citizens will have nine-one-one.
It goes to Bay County Dispatch?
It'll go to Bay County Dispatch, or if they're happy with it, it goes to Gulf County. It could still go to Gulf County. It depends on where the, uh, the cell service sends it.
I am.
And besides where you are. But we will still be dispatched ourselves and themselves upstairs together, using the same dispatch system that we're on. So when you hear that sweep of the wall upstairs, that'll be in their office too. They're on the same, um, rangers and that. We are, you know, separate radios with Gulf County. So everything is, everything is becoming a little bit more, um, consolidated.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, questions for five? No? All right, please. Tell the police.
Everything's been running smoothly, sir. I really don't have anything major to report.
Well, that's good. Any questions? All right, then. Mary, true? Gina?
Um, we have issued the Driftwood building permit and also the Mexico Beach Crossing apartments, um, in Saint Joe Development. They've submitted application for building permit, but they had been waiting on an address and parcel number and things like that, but they've got that all squared away, and so we're beginning that review.
All right, so that's the four hundred and forty?
It's nine apartment buildings. I believe it's a hundred and some odd.
Yeah, a hundred and some odd, if we, for phase one of the Saint Joe project.
Correct.
I saw him put fifteen, so I figured they were all, so. Well, that's great news. And the motel is, got the permit, that's even better news. Any questions for Bill?
Paul? Did DOT come back with anything on the road for the boat ramp there? Where they're putting the apartments in, they were gonna use the same road, they were gonna try to put a road closer to the bridge for the boat ramp to come out? They were gonna look into that?
I haven't seen anything about that.
So not everybody's on that same road as the boat ramp?
I haven't seen anything about that, no.
Yeah, we need to follow up. They were right. Bridget talked that they were, there was some concern that that was gonna be too close to the bridge, but we can, Paul, can you just note on that and let's find out what, what they're... That traffic's pulling right there.
Will do.
And I have a question for Gina. Uh, did Saint Joe ever develop a tree plan for any of the development down there? Because when they submitted all of this, it was two years ago, and they said all the trees are dead. About fifty percent of the protected species of sand live oak have blossomed blackout and leafed back out, so they are not dead, which means that their so-called clearing of trees is now no longer valid, and that is a protected species and part of their code requirement. So what about the tree plan?
They did submit a tree survey, um, and I asked them for some more information. I haven't heard back from them on that yet, so.
I would appreciate it if you would stay on top of that with, with all the other things you have to do, because it would be a real shame if they violated that requirement to have a plan to save those trees. Thank you.
All right, uh, Tony?
Good morning.
Morning.
I took the, uh, the income that we were receiving from the boat ramp, which is just to find out how much money we really did make since I started back in March through yesterday. For just the boat lodge ten-dollar fees, we made sixteen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and five cents. For the annual fifty-dollar permit, we made seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And then for the boat lodge fifteen-dollar fines, we made five hundred and thirty-one dollars, giving us twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents. So Darryl can buy some homework, so he'll finish it.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
And that goes into a special fund. It does, it does not go to Darryl for, for pitching. It goes, it goes back into the canal so that we can maintain the canal.
If that's all you gotta do, then. Thank you, Captain. Anything else? Question, so, okay, Tom?
Good morning, Mayor.
Council.
Uh, Public Works, uh, just wanna kinda give you an update. Uh, as of right now, uh, a couple of our new employees have drowned over two hundred and fifty stumps, uh, from dead trees. They started on Mariner Parkway and went all the way through there, uh, and now we're working down Fifteenth Street. And we're gonna continue to work through the winter months, uh, and cut down dead trees and get rid of those stumps, anything on the city right of ways that we can. Uh, also, uh, some of y'all probably have noticed, down in front of Shell Shack, uh, we finally took on the duty of fixing the hole that's on the side of the road. Uh, Tim and Andy in the road department just about have that completed now. Uh, that should be finished up probably today, sometime today. We're gonna get rid of that ice so we make that safe again. Uh, also, let you know, the canal is fully open, uh, all the way out to the sandbar. Uh, we are gonna continue to dredge, you know, on the west side, uh, but we had to make our way back out there. These storms we've been having on the weekends kinda backing us up. We had to go back and, and reopen, but right now the canal is fully open. Uh, also, the Public Works employees wanted me to wish all the council, uh, a Merry Christmas and the city employee, I mean, and the, uh, residents of Mexico Beach. Uh, we've had a pretty good year amongst the pandemic and, uh, everything and recovering from the storm, but, uh, we had a city, uh, luncheon yesterday for Christmas and, uh, it was really nice and they appreciate that. And I want to let y'all know, thank you and Merry Christmas. Uh, that's all I have for the Public Works side. I also have Kevin's report. He's not here. He had to have an MRI today. So if you want me to turn off the way.
Yeah, go ahead with that, and then we'll.
Okay. Uh, on the utility side, we added three new services that were connected. Uh, we had eight main water breaks that we attended to this past month. Uh, we had a total, uh, usage of eight million, one hundred and twenty-six gallons of water that went out through the city this past month. And on the garbage, we had one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty pounds of trash all gone. And, uh, that's pretty much covers, yeah, I handed y'all, each one of y'all have a handout of both of these. If, you know, other stuff, people will look at it. Other than that, that's all I've got, Mayor.
And Mayor, I've got a couple of things between, uh, Public Works and Utility to add. Um, the incinerator does go offline officially January second, so from that point forward, we will be running our garbage all the way over to Steel Field, and we've worked out a schedule where we can make that happen and, and not slow anything down for all intents and purposes.
Mario, I think they, they notified, uh, Shannon the other day and said they've extended that down till March. So I think they're still gonna be able to haul till March before we have to start going to Steel Field.
Okay. The, the canal project is underway. Sheet piles are going in along the canal. Um, we've got a good bit of work going on over there, so everybody, please understand, once that project is let, it's really the contractor's responsibility to keep safety and everything, so please respect the construction that's going on along the marina and, and at the boat ramp and all those places. So there's, there's a good bit of work. It'll probably kick off at a much faster rate that, after, after the holidays. Also, wanted to mention that the sidewalk work will start, uh, on January fourth, I believe. So that work will start, and the welcome center work will start about the same time, so we'll, we'll get those things done. It doesn't mean that things aren't happening. They still, they have to get shop drawings and they have to get approvals for materials and all that fun stuff. So that stuff is happening now, but physical work will start, uh, come January. Uh, I don't know if anyone, people noticed, but, um, there was a dredge just outside of Thirty-seventh Street where the city pier is. That dredging that was going on was to determine the depth of the, of the piles that will go out for the city pier. So again, that's progress through the FEMA process. And then, um, lastly, on the sidewalk work that's gonna kick off, Tommy worked with FDOT to figure out what work FDOT was doing versus what work the city was doing, so that we weren't doing their work and they weren't doing our work. And because of the monies coming from FEMA, if they do our work, we don't get paid for the work that they do, so we wanna make sure that we do all of our work basically first, and then they have a little bit more leverage to extend their work to other areas if, if we did some of their scope. So again, some good coordination has gone on over the last, uh, week or so to, to get those things done. And then the parking lot over at, uh, adjacent to Two Pans, uh, is underway. It should be complete by the end of, uh, next week, uh, before Christmas, like, Tuesday or Wednesday, it should be done. So that activity's going on, and, uh, we're currently bidding the landscape drawings for the walkways, and that is it.
Okay. Questions for utilities or Public Works? Anybody?
I got, Tommy, what about the road signs? I've perfected my memory. I know what you told me the last time. We, we finally got, made contact with them and, uh, about a week ago, and they said they would be delivered to us in about three weeks. So we should be about two weeks out of having all the road signs in to, once we do that, uh, we're gonna put everybody we can on that and get all the road signs all put back up throughout the city.
I spoke with Nick about the, uh, walkovers. Gina, they're, they're getting in touch with you to do permits and stuff? For the walkovers?
It's a conversation that I need to have with Gina. She, Gina, Gina produced a punch list for, I think, five or six.
The ones we had.
The fact that the contractor pulled a permit and has never closed out a permit gives us some leverage through the building department to go out and do the final inspection, and we can focus on the issues that are, um, basically code required, uh, uplift, structural issues. So we'll, we'll focus on those issues and get him out here, because again, the fact that, uh, he's not closed out permits gives us some leverage.
Anybody?
Mario, were the both, uh, were the parking lots going in next to Two Pans, are restrooms going back in there?
Eventually, we will get a restroom there. We, we have, I think we have three more restrooms that will get done as FEMA monies come through.
Anybody? Is David here?
Uh, no, sir. He had surgery this week and he will not be here. Uh, and I basically gave a lot of this update, also on the projects.
Is there, uh, I assume you saw the response from DOT?
Yes, sir.
Is that alarming, or is that, I, I didn't, I'm just, there was a pretty long list. I just wondered.
Yeah. Some of the things that they put on there, like telling us to spread out the connection so that we could downsize our lines, is a great idea. That's what we would like to do, but the way that they storm harden the roadway, it makes it where we can't get water across the street to a.
I guess I was thinking DOT would know that that was done that way. They did.
It's the left hand not talking to the right hand, so it's, it's, it's not uncommon, but we'll, we'll, we'll get through it.
Okay. So, but is the, or the, is it being out?
Our landscape architect is, is working on a response. If, if it changes the drawings in any way, shape, fashion, or form, what we'll do is we'll put it in.
Just a minute.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, we were trying to fast-track it to get it out. If, if this slows things down, it'll just slow it down by a week or so.
Okay. All right, then moving on, uh, to, let's see, number five on the, on our regular agenda. Uh, number one is they sent that variance at one oh six Thirty-second Street. We will open a public hearing on a variance request. Uh, Mario, if you would, just as you normally do, give us just a, for the record, uh, once you got that in here.
Mayor, we've been working on this a little bit and, uh, working with staff and, and the building department and trying to troubleshoot this thing, and what we've done is, uh, we've looked at it and with a little bit of understanding that the, the setback component that is being asked for is on the front edge. It's not on the sides where it really impacts the neighbors as much. It being on the front, the fact that it wasn't caught earlier on in the process, um, we would hope that council would take that with some understanding. And, uh, even though the planning board suggested denial, I think that legal and the building department and myself are thinking that if we could be a little considerate of it, it would be helpful, um, understanding that it was a pile that was set, and once that pile was set, it's kind of awkward to do it. We have made adjustments to the building department, and we've added the responsibility of the building department to require builders to put up their batter boards and give us a place to measure from, so that we can accurately measure from the property lines, uh, to make sure that the setbacks are being met before they can, um, move forward. So it, it is a requirement that we've added to the system and in hopes of precluding this from happening in the future. So taking all those things into, into account, we would hope that, uh, council would consider that, uh, in favor of this request.
Yeah, it's titled of a variance. Normally, a variance, you gotta do property-specific considerations and reviews. Something else to be unique about the property. But based on what Mario's just explained, if, if there was an ability at some point, the city may have caught this sooner and didn't, and there's some uncertainty there, you could treat this more like a, a waiver, um, exemption. If there's, like, like I said, if there's, there's a chance that the city had any faults, it's really different than normal variance. It gives you some authority to proceed.
Okay, we'll proceed with the public hearing, or is, are there those in the public here that, uh, want to speak or address the council?
My name's David Manassia. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Hand. Um, we don't have anything really to add, but we're here to answer any questions that you may have. The only thing I, I would like to point out that the, the economic impact on your decision today, if you don't grant the waiver, um, we've met with some engineers, we've met with some contractors. The only way to correct the problem is to essentially tear the house down and rebuild it. Um, so we'd be looking at a cost of over four hundred thousand, and we'd be looking at a timeframe of about fourteen months before they could actually move back in. So we would hope that the council would take that into consideration.
Is there anyone else here speaking during the public hearing phase?
You know, I've looked at what went on with the house, just because you have published on the website, and it seems like, I mean, somewhere there was a screw-up, but I mean, if anybody deserves a waiver for this, they do.
All right, fast call. Like, we're close to public hearing. Move to the tape. Chair will entertain additional conversation or motion based on what we've heard of Paul.
I think since we've, uh, the building department, uh, inspection department is gonna be looking at it now, that should alleviate any of the problems. That is the only thing that is a surprise move, so, you know, hopefully we won't get this thing again. So I don't have any problem with allowing it, based on the fact that we, we, we probably should have had that effect and everything else. We just, it's one of those things that slip by you, so.
Well, the only thing, actually, what you just said is, is the stairs. If that was taken care of, I, I would have no problem.
So how far is the stair over?
One foot too wide.
One foot too wide. What, what is the stair width? Does he even know? Y'all know what stair width is?
It's a little over four, almost four and a half feet, so it could be front down a little bit. It still may could.
And that, that would make the stairs on the side.
Yeah, and that would not be the setbacks there.
That's a fairly easy thing to do.
Yeah.
Consider it.
Do y'all see any problems with that?
I think the stair width, well, I'm just talking to the builder right here. We, well, we thought it was three and a half feet, but Gina's got four and a half. I'm not so sure. We're probably, you know, I mean, if we gotta fix the steps, we'll fix the previous steps. I just want it's not, to be honest with you.
I do have the after fact survey right here that we can go through and verify that and make, see if it's bad.
It shows in this four point four feet.
Oh, I think it's, it shows that these are these, kind of based on the
Yeah, there's a survey packet that, that shows the, the stairs.
Yeah.
It shows four point four feet. That's what I was basing that off of.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would think any motion to be made would have, had five minutes.
Okay.
Uh. Please let me finish.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Is that the after fact, the fact copy that you have on your hand?
Yeah, it was well submitted with the various application. Stair, stair.
So it shows four, four point four?
If it's something different, then.
Okay.
It's this space between the house and the steps that actually, there's like a, there's a gap. Like, actually, steps aren't that wide. There's a, I don't have a ruler, but I mean, it's like over
Six or eight inches.
Six or eight inches that the steps are built off the side of the house, so there's that gap. So really, like, if that gap wasn't there, it'd slide on over there.
There you go.
Cause I love my steps. There's some neighbor calling.
Okay, uh, more discussion or, or motion? What I'm gonna do with it, it seems the steps, if I'm following right, can be adjusted to meet the setback.
Uh, I'd say, uh, making a motion, I would, or accept the barriers on the front, but have the steps changed to meet code. Is that a good way of putting it?
Yeah.
So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Are there further discussion? Mr. Lynch, call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Moving on, next is the second reading of the Order seven fifty-seven, which is the flood plain ordinance. We can, uh, we'll have a motion read by title only, and then we can have any discussion to tell. Want to give a motion?
Make the motion, read, read Order seven fifty-seven by Tyler O'Malley.
Second.
Now, the motion in a second. Is there a discussion or comment on Order seven fifty-seven? Everybody, stand aside. We're gonna have a moment. Any opposition to, uh, reading by title? Mr. Lynch, if you would, please.
An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amended the Mexico Beach Land Development Code Section four point zero five point zero zero, flood plain requirements to eliminate elevation requirements that are calculated based on the five hundred year flood hazard area and to make associated amendments to previously adopted technical amendments to the Florida Building Code to amend the Land Development Code, Section four point zero six point zero two, to clarify how to measure heights relative to street elevations and to require in shaded X zone that the lowest finished floor be eighteen inches above the street, provided for applicability, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt Order seven fifty-seven.
Second.
She forgot.
I'll have a motion in a second. Mr. Lynch, call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, moving on is, uh, number three, which is a residential twenty-five forty-six, which deals with local options, uh, fuel tax. Uh, I'm gonna turn that over to our member, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you, and, and this has been a, a big community, um, project for all of the municipalities. We currently just work under the state statutes on how those monies are distributed, and it's based on how much money you spend on, on your roadways. And with the hurricane happening, very few people were spending money on their roadways. However, Bay County was spending a ton of money on their roadways because they have the abundant portion of the political option fuel tax because of their size and, and also the half-cent sales tax. So when that happened, Bay County said, look, we're, we're actually doing pretty good, and if we can maintain six point five million dollars within our system. And if we can maintain $6.5 million within our system, what we'd like to do is redistribute any monies over that. So the typical forecast is for that and there should be an increase of, you know, two, three, four, five, 10% as the years progress. So what they propose to do is take anything over the 6.5 and redistribute it to the municipalities. But they've, they've made the formula heavy for the smaller cities. And I don't know if you read through the thing, but they're going to take 40% of anything that goes over $6.5 million and give it to Mexico Beach. That is a huge windfall for Mexico Beach. Keep in mind, what we get today is 1.6 or 1.4% of that total figure. So it's going to bump us up by quite a bit. All the municipalities agreed to this. We are the last ones because most of them passed their ordinance on their first meeting in December. They don't have a second meeting in December. So they might have called today and said, do you think y'all are going to pass it or do you think you're, you know, the only person that doesn't pass it? And I said, no, I can assure you that I think our council will look at it favorably and we really appreciate all the work and the understanding that the other municipalities had to actually make it bottom heavy as opposed to top heavy. So it's a huge benefit to Mexico Beach and I would hope that you would consider improving it.
Okay, do we have a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 46 by title only?
Make a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 46 by title only.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or, I mean, does anybody, good, I like money.
There you go. Well, we have to, we owe the rest of the municipality these a thank you letter.
I will say it's the first time, I guess, I don't know how long, if this ever happens, where we were recognized for our need and yet we weren't penalized for being small. Lynch, if you would, please read.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving an interlocal agreement with Bay County and other Bay County municipalities regarding the distribution of local option fuel tax proceeds.
Thank you. And a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 20 dash 46.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Pollitt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to number four is a Resolution 20 dash 47, which deals with a task order. Before we even do that, I may be the only one that's confused about this, but underwater debris survey. What is this about?
Dina and her never-ending energy went out and got the City of Mexico Beach a grant to basically go out and survey from the city limits to the city limits, from the beach out to the second sandbar. And it's an underwater survey, so somebody will go out there and sonar and determine how much debris is left from Hurricane Michael out on the water. And as we learned with our debris in the canal, it really helps if you have a sonar reading. So we are going to get our sonar reading through these grant funds. Once we have that volume delineated and quantified, we will go after next year's funds from the same organization to remove that debris. So this is a two-step process, just like we're doing with the boat rent. We're going after the design first and then we'll go after the implementation. And that's what this is, to do the work out there. Duberry is our city engineer through contract. They've gone out to a consultant that can do this work and they've gotten this price through their process. And it's the same group that does our beach re-nourishment, so we're very familiar with the group that's doing this work. And they're also working on our jetty.
Okay.
We don't have any questions. It's a grant.
Yeah, this is a grant. There's certain amendments.
There a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 47 by title only?
Make a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 47 by title only.
Second.
There a motion in a second. Ms. Lynch, please read.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving a task order with Duberry Engineers, Inc. for professional services for Mexico Beach underwater debris survey in the estimated amount of $49,926.
So a motion for adoption?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 20 dash 47.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Pollitt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is Resolution 20 dash 48. It deals with a decrease in our contract profit for MX1. Mario, you want to give a brief recommendation on that one?
This is a FEMA project. It was a 428 project. So any savings that we have, we can apply these funds to other 428-type projects. So now that the project is complete, we can take these savings out of that contract with the contractor and it will go in a kitty that will be used to fund other projects that are storm hardening for the city in some way, shape, fashion, or form, potentially fixing another pump. You know, some things that will make us stronger for the future. So we'll utilize those funds and we'll bring those projects back to you before they get obligated. But this is, this is good news. It's $121,000 that was not utilized within the project. So it's a deductive change order.
I noticed that's a bold, black, deduct. All right, is there a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 48?
I make a motion to read Resolution 20 dash 48 by title only.
Second.
Motion set. Ms. Lynch, please read.
A resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida approving change order number five to the city's agreement with L and R Contracting LLC on MX1, the master lift station, repairs to remove unused contingency funds, a decrease in cost for $121,166.
That's motion number?
That's close.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion. We adopt Resolution 20 dash 48.
And motion set. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Pollitt?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Six and seven. Mario?
Mayor, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to remove both of those items from the agenda. Staff is going to focus on getting some stuff done with the ordinance that we have in place. And on the plat, there's a good bit of work that we need to do before we bring that back. So we can table this, just take them off the.
Okay. Council good with table? Okay. All right, Nick?
I do have one item today. Back in the middle of November, we did a second reading and adoption on an ordinance that adjusted what was allowed in the townhome district zoning. It was to ensure that a detached home could be built and to prevent multifamily apartments from being built. We noticed that hearing for 5:00 PM and then just did our normal 9:00 AM meeting like usual. The reason why we would notice it for 5:00 PM is when you change what's allowed or not allowed in the zoning category. The statutes say one of the hearings, either the first or second reading, has to be after 5:00 PM unless the council ahead of time votes by a majority plus one that you want to do it earlier. So we, I say we, some of the staff and I had talked about the 5:00 PM meeting and then we just didn't get it scheduled for 5:00 PM later. So it's easily corrected. What we'll do is we'll do one more reading and vote on it in January. For right now, what I'd like to know from you is whether you would prefer to do 5:00 PM or your normal 9:00 AM time. Do you want to do your normal 9:00 AM time? I'm just asking that you have a motion right now to have that hearing on this townhome district ordinance at 9:00 AM like your usual meeting times. That was probably a little confusing. I've lost many questions involved.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Me too.
Okay, just do a motion.
If we can just do a motion and everyone.
Oh, you need a motion?
Yeah, I'll need four of the five of you to want to do it at 9:00 AM. And then we'll just set it back up just like last time and vote one more time.
I make a motion that we set the meeting for this issue for 9:00, 5:00 ready to meet.
Is that good enough?
Good enough.
So, there a motion in a second? Dale, let's close. You did a good job. All right, with that motion in a second, is any opposition? Let the record replace the fact that it's filed over. Let go of that for you.
That's all. Thanks.
Okay, you're up.
Mayor, I just want to say thanks to all the employees. Their workload is not just their everyday workload, but, you know, we're building marina. We're adding sidewalks. We're building parking lots. We're replacing fire hydrants. We're still recovering from the hurricane and they're doing it very shorthanded and no complaints and just full speed ahead. I know that I appreciate all the work. I know that y'all do. I just want to make sure that the public knew that there's a lot going on. That's it for me.
Okay. Go ahead, Chair.
We've given Tommy a whole lot more responsibility. Are we at some point going to consider more money for him to do the, because his workload is like double.
He did receive a raise during the budget amendment and it was in line with what we were doing when Thomas was leaving and he was coming in. So we have done that and we've done the same thing with a couple of other employees that he's relayed some of his workload. So we've done that for him and a couple of others. And I think he has one more person that he would like to bump up because, again, I think it's Ken. Ken is taking on some additional responsibilities, him having the expertise on construction. I think he's going to pass on some of these construction projects for him to look at.
All right, well, that was prior to him taking on all the other stuff that he's done, right? I would just like to talk about it at some point.
Sure.
To bring it up because I just, I just know personally that I always like when I do a lot of extra stuff, being compensated for it. And I think we should at least look at it and see if, you know, if it's something that he's worthy of. And what about Kevin? Are we going to do, is he going to be a interim soon or is he interim now or is he going to be permanent?
He has, he has been interim for a while. We have not gotten any responses on the, and we need another person. So if we don't get another person that has the certification that we're looking for, we do have the fail-safe of going back to Thomas, which Thomas is going to help during the Christmas holidays. And also Bay County has provided us some workers that can work off their time on our time and get compensated. So we've found a way of dealing with not having the two certified people in order to do all the checks and balances. But I would like to, in the not-too-distant future, basically just fill another person into that position because he is shorthanded as a whole. So we really need another person, but he was compensated as the interim, you know. Okay, thank you, Mario.
Did we reach out to Mary Leonard as an alternate? Did we try that?
No, sir, I did not.
Mayor, I can help you all with that. Mary helped us back when Thomas was here. And I think Mary is to the point now, she told us not long ago that she just, you know, she's retired now and she don't want to, yeah, she's, she's just, she's happy doing what she's doing. So I don't think, I mean, it's something we could do, but I don't think she's going to.
Well, she, I only raised that question. I talked to her. She came by and we just said Merry Christmas and all that and.
I'll see her tomorrow.
She acted like she was pretty bored. She didn't say, I didn't ask her about it, but she acted very bored.
I think we ought to ask her. I believe Mario or Tommy or some of our.
Just reach out.
We must recycle that.
I'll see her tomorrow.
We definitely can do that.
No, it doesn't. It's not, it's not something, I mean, it's just on a call basis and it's not often. It's not often. So I'd rather at least try.
Yeah, I'll reach out to her.
Don't tell her I told you to call. No, she's a good gal. And if she could help us, something tells me she might. Uh, council comments, anyone?
I got one little thing.
All right.
Last week, I had a good friend of mine's wife died and the sheriff parked, went beyond. They come to the house and got me. I could be with the man. I like come in, Marty Williams, and he thanked us for a good job they did. I appreciate it. And he does his hand in it. And Tommy's doing that thing. Everybody in the city is. Y'all have a good Christmas. Merry Christmas. Let's don't forget what Christmas is about.
Amen.
Amen. I agree. Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you all for coming and have a happy and prosperous new year. All right, Rock, what you got?
I just wanted to say, I mean, it's been said here, last year I watched the city workers. They've done a hell of a job. They busted their butts and as a resident, I appreciate it. And hopefully everybody has a Merry Christmas. You guys have too. Come up here. I'll always agree with what you're doing. As you know, I sent you the emails, but you've done, you've done a great job. You really have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rock. Appreciate it. All right, motion for adjournment.
Merry Christmas and some more.